And now I believe we are down to the budget update. Ms. Parks?
Yep, Mr. Demetrio is coming forward. He's gonna start, uh, start us off with the budget update this evening.
I thought that first I would give you an update where we actually are. We closed the month of March. So I highlighted the general fund and you can see where we were last year in revenues and where we are this year, about nine point four million dollars more, which is about 4.4% higher than we were last year. And then on our expenditure side, you can see that last year we're about 193 million. Now we're about almost 206. So it's almost 30 million dollars more in expenditures at the same time from last year. So as far as additions or reductions to the fund balance, you can see right now we're about 18.1 million dollars, whereas last year we were at 21, almost 22 million. So we're about 3.6 less than we were, 16 and a half percent less than we were at the same time last year. And you can see over here that last year we used about 6.8 million dollars. So we're starting, it's the beginning fund balance. It's about 6.8 million dollars less. So overall, right now, we're about 10 million dollars less than we were at the same time last year. So last year, we ended up losing almost 6.8 million dollars. This indicates to me that we might lose maybe even more than what I told you earlier, the 6.6 million. Uh, next, I would like to give you several scenarios that, um, that we've, we've, uh, we've determined, we've developed in the, in the business office. So I can give you an idea what, what to expect. Uh, and they're basically five years. So we used, um, certain assumptions in order for us to, to develop these scenarios. And all the assumptions are the same. I'll go through them in a second. The only thing that changes is the amount of the reductions and the timing of the reductions. So we'll go through certain, so all the, um, all the assumptions that we use, basically increase the foundational allowance, how much you get per student, $200 per year, which is pretty generous. Also, we're assuming that we will be losing about 105 students annually, which is what's happened this year. And then we would increase the amount of funding that we get from the WISD by $2 million a year, which is the countywide special education mileage. On the expenditure side, we're assuming that steps are given every year. We're assuming that, we're assuming that one and a half percent annual salary increase every year. We're assuming that the retirement increases one and a half percent. We're assuming that the health insurance increases 5% per year, that all the vendor contracts increase by 25% and that we reduce, that we're reducing staff by 35 staff annually through attrition. So this is just using, the results of this is just using attrition, basically. So you can see the, um, the first year will be the 24, 25, that using just attrition, we will be, based on the assumptions that I showed, we will be in deficit next year, about seven and a half million. And it continues to grow over the five-year period if it's not taken care of.
Which line is, that, that's the, that's the fund balance?
The fund balance is right here in the red.
Okay.
This is the ending fund balance. This is how much we lose every year. And then this is the percentage, negative percentage of fund balance over the five-year period. When it's in red, it's,
Negative.
Okay. So using the same assumptions, but in this time, we're also having reductions of 15 million dollars. So I think the numbers that, can we make them a little smaller so they can fit? So what happens is that the first, when we do, make reductions of $50 million, the first year, we'll have a surplus of 1.2. Therefore, a fund balance will go to seven and a half million, which is about 2%, 2.38% of revenue, 2.39% of expenditures, which, um, doesn't meet our, our state or board policy, the 5% of revenues for the state, early warning legislation, or the 6% of the board policy. And then you can see over the next few years that it actually goes in deficit in the fourth year with reducing expenses 15 million dollars, including the assumptions, including the attrition that I mentioned earlier. So the next assumption is to actually reduce it by 20 million, same assumptions. So when we reduce it by 20 million, you see that we will make 6.8, 6.2, I'm sorry, million. And then we will end up with 12 and a half, which is about 4%. And we do meet the revenue, the early warning legislation in the year two and year three, and then in year four, it drops off again, and in year five, it drops even more. Yes.
So this year, or the budget war in this year is below the 5%?
Yes.
If we did this, that would be the second year, and that would trigger treasury?
There, there's, um, it's, with the treasury, there is, yes, there are, um, it's like a, a trick kind of situation.
Okay.
So, um, yes, it depends on, also after that, it depends what kind of deficit elimination plan we submit. When we get out of deficit, so if it's, let's just say, less than five years, then we will go to the Department of Education to deal with us. If it's gonna take more than five years, then we go to the Treasury Department, and once you go to the Treasury Department, um, there is kind of a state treasurer, the state budget director, and, and another state official. They have a group of three, they determine if there's financial distress. If there is financial distress, then they have different options. They could, um, uh, we might have a consent agreement. We agreed to do these things. They send an emergency manager. We filed bankruptcy. There, there's all these not good options. Yes.
Just to clarify, we've had annual deficits, which is structural and something we have to reverse. I think we can, hopefully, we can agree with that. We are not in a total deficit. We have a fund balance, we have a positive fund balance. It's lower than the state wants us. It's lower than we want to be. But we're not, as I see it, in any imminent danger of a takeover. We are doing more reporting. Is that correct?
Um, I, last year, we were under 5%. This year, we will be under 5%. Next year, if we don't do anything, even if we do attrition, we're in deficit. Um, depend, depending what decisions you make here,
Right.
It's really up to you. You make the decisions. If you don't make good decisions, financially speaking, then, um, you can lose control of the school district.
Right. And if we make really good financial decisions, we could lose control of the financial, uh, school district in other ways. So that's our balancing point. That's our balancing point. And it's a tough one, but go on. That's, I'm just trying to get the facts here.
Yeah, yeah. So, um, another option that we looked at is actually cutting 25 million, but do it over two years, not do it all in one year. So in this option, uh, the first year, we would actually lose about 1.3 million. So a fund balance will go down to under 2%, one and a half percent. The second year, it will rise to 4.4 and a half percent, you would say. And then the next three years, we will meet the state and, uh, and the board policy. And then in the, you can see that in the last year, uh, there's, uh, the 741,000 in red. I can't get my pointer to get there, it doesn't show. Anyways, in the last year, in year five, you're gonna have to probably make some adjustments, but they don't look too great, um, so they can be managed. So doing the 25 million, and I, I heard somebody today do it slowly, slowly. So, um, so we can do like 10 million the first year, and then three years of 5 million each year. And then, um, you'll see that we're almost down to nothing next year, and then we stay at all, it, it's, you never get out of it, basically.
So when we're at these low rates, whether it be at 2%, 1.9, um, it costs us money because we have to borrow money to be able to meet our payroll.
That, that's, uh, that's coming up tonight.
Yeah, but I mean, that's, that's part of it, too. I mean, it costs money not to make these decisions.
That, that is one point. Another point is, um, we're making certain assumptions. So if our assumptions are a little bit to the left, we can be, um, you know, we can be in trouble. This is so razor thin. Then the recommendation that I've, um, we're recommending to you is basically do 25 million and just do it all at once, and, uh, basically ripping the bandaid off. So what happens in this scenario, in the first year, you'll be adding about 11.2 million to the fund balance. You will meet the state 5%. You will not meet the, uh, the board policy. But in the second year, you will meet both. And then in the third year, um, and then the fourth and the fifth, and you will have to do something in the, on the fifth year if you choose to, but you will have enough, you have almost 35 million dollars to deal with it. So in my professional opinion, this is the best scenario for the school district.
Could you go back to the assumptions page, please?
Yes, the assumptions are all the same.
Right. Um, so over the last five years, have we seen a 200 increase every year in the foundational allowance? That seems very generous to me, like way over.
It is, um, I'll go back. The last three years, we have received almost 1,100, which has never happened before. We had 400 and 500 the last couple of years. I know for next year, they're proposing, the governor proposing 240. I know the legislature is about 190. And so it went up, we know a foundation went up over 10 years, 1,500 dollars, which is about 150 dollars if you, per year. But we know that 1,100 happened in the last three years. So if you take the seven years before that, over seven years, we basically received, um, 400. So which is like 60 dollars a year. It depends who is in charge in the legislature and who is in charge in the governor's office. That plays a big role, how much school districts receive.
But it also depends what the tax revenue is for the state. Because when things got tough, years, not that long ago, there were cuts in the middle of the year. There were money taken out. Oh, sorry, your payment you expected isn't gonna be that.
In another year of COVID, it was at the end of the year, in August. For the previous year, I know we lost 3 million dollars. They was taken, we didn't lose it, it was taken by the state. Yes.
Can we have a discussion of enrollment projections? As we know, our, our growth was predicated on continuing enrollment, new housing, desirable district, new programs, bring things in, then COVID hit, and for a variety of reasons, we lost enrollment. We have not recovered it. It stayed, I don't know, it's still sort of down about 1,000. I, you know, that's another huge factor. I don't, nobody here really has an answer to enrollment, but, um, that, that's a big factor. I don't, I don't know where to have this discussion, but I wanna, I wanna bring things up as to whether, you said 105, I can't hold on to the numbers. But a continuous decrease in enrollment, is that, I mean, it's cautious, right? And that's, that's your job to be cautious for the, for the sake of the financial stability.
So, um,
But is it overly so?
Over the 10 years, over the 10 years, we are at the same point we were 10 years ago. We're four students difference between 10 years ago and, and now. I think I've showed that in, in the previous, and in the last four years, um, we lost about 1,100 students. And 900 happened in 21, 22, I believe, and, and this year, we lost 105. It's in like nine and eight and seven years ago, we were adding 250 to 300.
Right.
And then it stopped, and then COVID happened, and then we're, we're losing. We also know, um, that, uh, a lot of our enrollment increase was due to schools of choice. And we also know that the birth rate in a county, it's, it's going down. It's not just that county, it's in the whole state. It's, it's, it's going down. I've tried to stay middle of the road, project, all the assumptions that I used, I didn't try to go too far to the right or too far to the left. And, um, I try to choose some kind of realistic assumptions to, to see what happens, and then play with a variety of scenarios and so forth.
Right. Yeah, we're, you know, there's a friendly city council looking for more than housing, but housing costs are increasing tremendously, which is pricing families out, so I, I don't have any wisdom here.
Ms. Schmidt?
So this is a good topic to bring up. Um, and yeah, city council talks about building, but they're not starter homes. They're not necessarily places for young families. This is, a lot of our district is very expensive. People are also aging in place. They're not leaving because we know universities, um, draw, you know, it's a great place as you're in your retired years, there's a lot of activity. The state of Michigan is losing people. It's a big deal. The governor has all kinds of programs now where they're trying to bring people back. Maybe Ann Arbor is so special that, you know, that isn't, we're not affected by that, that everybody else is leaving everywhere else in Michigan, but not here. But all those things, um, you know, it's not the baby boomer days where we had all these kids.
When we looked at the numbers, where did the students go when, when we lost them? So, um, it was, it wasn't one specific place. There were a couple hundred out of the 1,100 that left the state and left the country. There were a couple hundred that went to other school districts. There were a couple hundred that went to charter schools. There, um, there were a couple hundred that went to private schools. So it was a, it wasn't one place. It, it was, it wasn't a variety of sources.
Trustee DePrue?
I'm wondering if we can spend some more time kind of discussing the pros and cons of the two-year option, rather than doing everything at once. Because looking at that, it does bring us up into the positive, but it also gives us more time to consider other options, rather than doing everything all at one time. So if you could discuss a little bit more about the pros and cons of that.
Definitely. So you, you can see, well, why don't I go to the next page? And I think some of those pros and cons will be kind of explained, and then we can, we can come back to it as well. So the reasons for their recommendation is that, um, this recommendation is compliant both with the early warning decision, early warning legislation, and the board of education policy most consistently. And it does give the best financial results for the school district. And it gives it long-term stability based on our assumptions, right? And then if you do it over two years, the same things that are happening tonight, it will be going on next year as well. And then I, I think people need some clarity in when there's confusion, okay, we're gonna do half of it now and half next year, so what are you gonna do next year? Um, it is, the system is gonna be in this chaotic, I don't know how to call, how to call it. It, it will be a lot of chaos for another year, which I don't think it does anybody any good. And, um, I, I understand, it's, it's your decision, but, um, for me, this is, this is the best thing to do. And also, I, I'd like to say, even, even when we reduce 25 million, there will be 304 million dollars left in the school district to educate, um, or 16, 17,000 kids. So we have 16,8,045, or next year, maybe 16,740 kids, which is about a little bit over 18,000 dollars per child, which should be plenty.
I guess, trustee Gainer from out first, and then I'll ask my question.
Okay. I, I may be jumping the gun here, but it's, it's intrinsic in the problem we have. I'm all for getting to a sound financial position, but we don't yet know what that means in terms of how the district is gonna be operating. So we, I, I don't know how we're gonna make the decision without that information. I, Superintendent Parks, I don't know if you can briefly outline, um, plans to give us some guidance with that. All things being equal, yeah, it's gonna be hard. It'll be hard this year, next year, we'll have to do, I think we'll have to do one or the other. But, but if we, I, I'm not gonna say destroy, but if we eliminate so much that the community loses trust in our schools, we're, we're gonna have that problem as well on top of it. We, we have to keep trust in our schools. We have to keep community trust, and we have amazing teachers, and we, we have the resources, we, we can do it. I, I firmly believe we can do it. I'm, don't know if it's in the best interest to do it all at once, and how, how do we make a decision without having a more clear understanding of what those cuts are going to look like?
So, so I'll start with, if, uh, Ms. Ozenski or Mr. Colley, if you could go to the next slide, I'll start with, um, what we came out with initially, um, at the very onset of us learning really the scope of and magnitude of our, our financial challenges. We talked about, um, the preliminary, the first, the first thing we would do is look at central office and administrative reductions. And so to, to date, um, what we have done is looked at everything that we have at the central office and administrative level. And so far, we have, are, are going to be, if, if there's authorization, recommending, reducing positions for a central office and administrative positions that's approximately equivalent to 3.5 million dollars. We are, um, as we have shared, renegotiating our vendor contracts with transportation and custodial, which will yield about 1.2 million dollars. We, uh, received just, um, just a few days ago, an additional grant allotment, which we were not anticipating, um, that has allowed us to, uh, actualize a savings of about 1 million dollars from our general fund, based on the terms of the categorical. We were able to move some of our general fund expenses into that categorical to the tune of about a million dollars. Um, and then we also have some district department reductions as a result of looking at, uh, our central office budgets and, uh, putting some, some freezes and some, um, reductions in place from, uh, everything from in facilities, some of our, um, yearly, but not required for the health and safety of our students and staff, uh, services like, redoing lines and block top, or in parking lots and things like that. So taking some of those things off the table that are not required to be done. We also looked at some positions in our instructional technology department, um, and a few other things, and that will get us about 1.3 million dollars. And so all, all of these are not school-related reductions. So this is about 7 point million dollars, approximately, uh, not to the, not to the penny, but approximately. And so that's about, um, 18 million dollars left if we go with the 25 million. And so as it relates to what will be, what will round that out, we, we're not, you know, I've said to trustees before, into our community, until we, you know, engage with our, our staff and our community, I, I don't have what those reductions will look like for you, trustee Gainer or trustee, uh, any other, you know, uh, person who's curious about that particular detail. I've, you know, repeatedly shared that until we hear back from our community and our staff, we, we don't have those recommendations to be, to bring forward. But these are the ones that we committed to at the onset, um, starting with, and so these are the ones that we know so far.
Trustee DePrue?
Okay, so just clarifying, were we talking about, um, kind of what this is gonna look like? From my understanding, there are two separate plans, one is for the state and one that is gonna be more detailed for us at the district, correct?
Correct.
So the one that is more detailed, that's supposed to be for the district, is that gonna come before the board, so folks have the opportunity to have input on it, or at least see?
Absolutely. Absolutely, it will come before the community and the board.
And what should the community expect to see that?
So we have our community engagements we're doing over the next couple of weeks. Um, and then after that, we will be compiling the feedback that we get. We'll be sharing that feedback, uh, with the community and with the board of education. And then based on the feedback that we get from community, from board, from staff, all that together, then that's when we're gonna move forward and start to construct the district plan. So it, the, the beginnings of that, though, won't, won't start until after we've done all those engagements.
So our vote tonight, or pending vote on a resolution, is really just to satisfy the requirements of the state?
Correct. So if, if by that you mean, are there imminent plans as soon as a vote, vote is cast? No, there are not. If, if that's what you mean by your question.
Yeah, 'cause I'm trying to get some clarification. It's, it sounds like, you know, like I said before, that even if we do vote on this tonight and say it were to pass, you would still have some kind of, um, it's really not the uncertainty around what will happen and when it will happen.
That's true. Yes.
It just gives you the ability to start planning. It's not actually what necessarily is gonna happen, is what you're saying?
Correct. When we get to that, to the point of, of, of planning, what those recommendations will be specifically, yes.
Okay. Okay. Trustee Carroll?
Yeah, I'd just love to weigh in here for just a minute. I, I appreciate the slides in that they give us the different scenarios. I think everyone can look at these slides and see that the recommendation you made is the most attractive financially to the district anyway. What I, what I can't understand is, you know, I'm looking at this slide 20 where we actually have dollar amounts associated with reductions. And so we're gonna make up 18 million dollars allegedly somewhere else. And I think what the community asked for, at least the way I read the public commentary, is that we'd love to see some numbers around some of those other things. For example, some of the programming and any of the stuff that was mentioned that is non-facetic, non-facetic personnel to our teachers. So everything from, I'll use what was used in the public commentary, what would we save if we got rid of those Chromebooks? Right? To, to put a dollar next to that, so when we can reduce, if we're just conceptually thinking about the 18 million, how much of the 18 million are we going to be able to reduce that by? And I think the natural assumption is, well, that's gonna save a little bit of teacher layoffs on the other end of it. So I think that, that, a slide like this, with everything in consideration, I think is what we need to make an informed decision.
Yeah.
Now, having said that, um, I, I heard the conversation that we just had about, it gives you the ability, our, our vote a little later, to be able to start to make plans. But I, I don't see why, if they're just plans, we can't start doing that now. And why, why, why we would need to necessarily give up, give up so much authority? give up, give up so much authority on, on what we could do if they're just plans? I mean, if they're just plans, they could come before us, and then we'd have a more informed decision to make that decision. As opposed to, hey, yeah, go ahead, do it all. To make the plans, that's what a plan is. You're supposed to have the plan before you do it. And I think there's enough comments tonight about us perhaps slowing down a little bit and taking a look at some of those things before we, we have the ability to lay off folks. I think that's pretty much it. And so, you know, I, I, to some extent, I mean, I think most of us would say that, that recommendation that you made is the right recommendation for the longtime financial district. It's the question of the 25 million. I think that is, that is inside, which now, I can, after looking at the slide, which I can see is now 18 million dollars. So I appreciate the work getting to the 7 million, but we have obviously 18 more million dollars worth of work to do. And we wanna do that in an informed kind of way. So to ask the, ask the public to, to say, what should we reduce without knowing how much they cost? I think it's a little tough for them to even comment and to see as anything but that as being something performative.
The reason that we need to do this tonight is two reasons, right? One, we have the April 15 deadline. And two, we have the employee contracts deadline. And so that's why we need to make those. Or am I misunderstanding?
So we have, we have the corrective action plan for the state.
Right.
Where in that plan, in general terms, not specific positions or anything like that, we do want to be able to include that one of the things that we will do to actualize the 25 million dollars is staff reductions as necessary. If, if, if that's where we're, where we're headed. So yes, that's correct.
So our vote tonight gives you the ability to include that, should it pass, in your, in your plan for, you know, if we cannot find the cuts elsewhere, then we can, we can do it by staff reduction to make sure that we are above the state's 5%.
That is correct.
Okay. Trustee Mohammed?
So just, just to clarify, so what, what is, what exactly do you need for the April 15 deadline? So what components? Cuz I'm kind of confused because the resolution is really to give you the authority as, you know, the superintendent to authorize layoffs. But I'm not seeing the connection to the report, the reporting or the plan that needs to be submitted by April 15.
That's what I was just saying, I think.
I didn't.
Okay. What, what I was saying, what Ms. Parks said yes to was that we have to submit this report to the corrective action plan to the state by April 15. And what we're, if we pass the resolution tonight, then it allows them to include in that plan that if we cannot find cuts outside of staff reductions, then we will cut the appropriate amount by reducing staff. In the meanwhile, they can continue to work with the community, teachers, other stakeholders to find the necessary monies. But in worst-case scenario, they're able to tell the state that we, we will meet that 5% by reducing staff accordingly. And that's what the vote tonight will give them the ability to do.
So you cannot include that in the report if it wasn't approved by the board?
That's correct.
Trustee Schmidt, and trustee Dupree?
From my perspective, the way I see this is, this is basically, the vote tonight is basically saying to the state, we get it. We'll do whatever's necessary. We, I think I'll agree, I don't think there's any disagreement here, that we're gonna try to do everything in our absolute power to cut the least amount of staff. I mean, I think we're all on the same page here. But we have to tell the state, well, okay, maybe we're not, but that's what I'm thinking, so I can only speak for me. So, but when we talk to the state, we have to say, we've got this. We're moving in the right direction to be financially on good footing. And part of our plan, if we get to that, we're authorizing you to include that as part of the final plan that you create. All we're telling the state now is, we are doing something about this. We're not just sitting here going, well, you know, it'll all just work its way out. We're showing them that we are, as a board, authorizing our superintendent to do the work. And then that work will be done, and then the plan, plan will be developed still yet to come, cuz we haven't met with our teachers. And actually, from my perspective, I want to hear from everyone in the community, but I lean heavily on my subject matter expert people, my educators, they're the experts. They understand master schedules, they understand all the things that it takes to create programs so the children achieve. And
All right. Trustee Dupree, and then trustee Gainer and Mohammed.
So just to try to understand things, in four days, we have to submit a report to the state.
Correct.
When, in that report, we have to say that we are willing to reduce staff if needed.
Correct.
And it's possible that once we, if this passes, is it possible that people will not get laid off? And see, that, that's the, the concern is, it's creating a lot of anxiety, a lot of economic anxiety, because we don't really know what's gonna happen. We're just passing something, you know? And I just wanted to acknowledge that. We don't really know what's actually going to happen after the 15th. Now, I get that we have to put it there. We can't just say, this is what we're gonna do, and not actually put forth a mechanism to do it, but I do wanna acknowledge the fact that this is causing a lot of economic anxiety for people because you still don't know what's gonna happen.
Did you have follow-up, trustee Schmidt, on trustee Dupree's point?
As I understand the budget, 90% of our budget is labor. If we have to make cuts, it, please, please let me speak. We were quiet to hear you, just please. We know that with that percentage of our budget, that that will happen. It's not honest, I don't believe, for me to look at teachers, my fellow teachers that I worked with, to say to them, we're gonna do this, you know, we're gonna take care of this with attrition, and we're gonna find other stuff, and that's not being honest. This is a 90% budget that's labor costs. And it stinks that we have to consider this and that this will happen. The goal here to me is to make the numbers so, so, so low to find every other possibility. I mean, we don't wanna cut buses. We could save 9 million there. But we don't wanna say no buses for kids. That would be terribly inequitable. I mean, somebody said tonight, let's get rid of sports. I heard some moans in the crowd. You could save money there. I don't think people wanna do that. I mean, it's just a matter of, the reality is, a big part of our budget is labor. And that's just the way the budget is built.
Trustee Mohammed? Uh, trustee Gainer?
Thank you. Two things, maybe three things. First, I went really fast last meeting. Can you go over the contractual deadlines for the different union groups for us, please? And I'm gonna take notes this time.
You, you would need HR here for that, and she just stepped out.
She's coming.
She's gotta do, okay. So let me go on to the, the other thing. These are two things combined. One, you know, the part, one branch of this is we have deadlines, okay? And we have to authorize layoffs. And it's a matter of trust, my understanding. Well, I want clarification, but it has to do with the matter of trust, so let me do that part first. There's not 100% trust in this room, and there's reason for that. And we, as a board, right, as an administration, we have to do everything we can, whatever level of trust there is, to regain it. And we can't just ask for it at this point. If we pass the motion, the resolution as is, we give authority to the superintendent to make whatever cuts she deems best for the district. I, I want that clarification. I hear Ms. Parks say, and I trust her at that level, to say she'll come back to the board, to the community with the plan, but this vote does give her that authority. I suppose we could revoke it. I don't, I don't even know that, but I suppose. So where am I going with this? I mean, I guess it comes back to having as much information as we can, having assurances that are more than lip service, which we've had in the past. I mean, as a board, we've given great trust to the superintendent, and I don't think we're in a position to do that without caution. So maybe we have a chart by now, and then we can deal with the other things.
He had a question for HR. Did you hear his question?
I think it was about a notification timelines for other units. So at this point, as we discussed before, ASCSA had the 90-day notification requirement. Every other group at this point has either a two-week prior to the end of the school year or by the end of the school year prior to the next. So if you want them all individually.
No, that's, that's close enough, but it's not coming up at the end of April, to be clear.
That is correct.
Trustee Mohammed?
So, and I've said this before, so as a board, we have to be, you know, as transparent, as honest, and I understand that. But that also includes having a plan that we know that, and I know Ms. Parks is, is planning this, but with all stakeholders involved, and that includes our teachers, staff, you know, students, parents. But I feel that we need to approve, you know, a budget or resolution with all the information, and that includes a plan. So I appreciate this information, but I would have loved to see more. So my, my question is, is how do you, can you actually addend? I don't know if it's a question for you, the report, so that we can pass, maybe later, at a later time, pass this resolution and addend it to include authorization for layoffs, for further layoffs. Can you do that? I don't know.
That part, I, I don't know, outside of them having informed us already that they want the, the plan as soon as possible. So.
And I think the answer to your question, I think you're asking is, I don't think Mr. Demetrio and our team can send a response to the state's corrective action plan request saying we're gonna cut 25 million dollars without the possibility of staff reductions. So we cannot not vote for staff reductions and send a plan that will meet the requirement. Am I, am I saying that correctly?
Yes, we, there's no way we will be able to cut 25 million dollars without, without staff being involved. So there's about 260 million. That is, out of our 320 million, 360 million is basically the, the employees of the school district.
Mr. Demetrio, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
I guess I have a question that I think I need clarity on. Out of all the proposals that you've suggested, which one, or which ones take emergency management off the table immediately?
That would be their option to, there's two options.
Okay.
One of them is to cut 12 and a half this year and 12 and a half next year. And the other one is to be 25 million dollars for next year.
Okay. Well, other than that, emergency management would still be a possibility.
I would say yes.
Okay. Trustee Gainer has a comment.
Thank you. No, I, I dispute that emergency managers are imminent. We're not in default. We're not running a deficit. That's a, that's an improper tactic to bring up. And I won't get experts here. I'm not saying we don't need to report. We have to do something. We're gonna end up with layoffs. It's gonna be painful. But the charge of that there's an emergency manager on our door when we have a positive fund balance is just unfounded.
I think it's premise that it all depends on what you do here. If you make the right decisions, then.
Trustee, trustee Dupree had a comment, I believe.
So we need 18 mil, not 25, right? Because you figured out about 7, yeah?
Yes.
Where the numbers ran with the 18 mil instead of 25, particularly for the two-year option?
We still need to cut the 7. I mean, it's, it's 25 because we've already identified the 7. We did run at 17 and 18 million dollars. And if I remember correctly, and Mr. Gainer can correct me, we were about 3% fund balance for a few years, and then it drops.
As I remember, 18 million got us up to 3%, and then it started dropping quickly.
Yep.
So that's just a, a Band-Aid for one year.
Yes. Good memory.
I've spent many hours on that, on that.
So then we'd be moving toward deficit with 18? Trustee Gainer?
If we didn't, if we did no more, according to these assumptions, the spreadsheet says, yes, we'd be moving back toward negative fund balance within
Few years.
Yeah, a few, few years. We can't stop. We can't stop at that.
With 18, okay.
Given, given these assumptions.
Okay.
Well, we can look at the 12.5 again. You know, and if I, if I may, the question before us is, we need to report to the state. And I'm not a lawyer, and I'm not a politician, so I don't know exactly what's mandatory. It's all political, right? We have to give a good faith effort that we are gonna move in the positive direction, I believe. So what does that require from us? So maybe can we go back to the 12.5, 12.5, and give us a feel for it? So this, this gets us close to 5% next year and over 5%.
No, no, next year you'll be at 2%.
I'm sorry, after this year, we're at 2%. We're locked into that, right?
Next year you'll be at 1.6 right there.
Oh, wait, hold on.
You'll be at 1 and a half percent next year. If you do the 12 and a half, the following year when you cut.
1.6 at the end of next year?
Yes.
Okay.
And then at the second year, you're gonna be at 4.47. The third year is where you're actually meeting the state.
Okay, thank you.
And the state needs for us to be able to have a plan to come up to the required amount within five years, right? Or is it, is that not it?
It is, it is, it is not five years. There is, so if our plan is, let's just say, under five years, then we will be transferred from Treasury to the Michigan Department of Education. If it's over five years, we stay with Treasury. But either one of those departments can request the governor to, if we're not taking care of business, it doesn't really matter. Either one of those departments can request. And there are three or four options. We, they could ask us to do a consent agreement, which the Department of Education asked Detroit to have a consent agreement. And basically, they're telling you, you gotta do this, you gotta do this, you gotta this, you gotta do this, you gotta this. Another one is the emergency manager. Another one is bankruptcy. You go to chapter nine, like the city of Detroit did. There's, there are not good options. There's.
Trustee Schmidt?
So our fiduciary responsibility is to make sure that the funds are solid. Otherwise, we put at risk, and I'm not wanting to play fast and loose here with contracts, we put at risk the contracts that exist. And, and one of my fellow trustee doesn't feel like, you know, you can bring up emergency managers or consent agendas, but the reality is, these numbers are abysmal. This is irresponsible for us to be sitting at 1.58, and then we'll be spending money, to borrow money, to be able to pay everybody. To me, we have to be, we have to have a fund balance that is healthy. have to have a fund balance that is healthy, because we don't know what's coming. We don't know if in a year, the state says, well, this year, you know, tax revenues were down, we're not giving any increases. Because you, your assumption was 200 years. So, I mean, I mean, I feel like it's our fiduciary responsibility to make sure that we pass this, allow our superintendent, because I know that she's working with staff and the people in our district, and the plan, that's your plan, and you've laid it out. And, you know, and I don't, this, this waiting until right before school's out to tell people if they're laid off, I don't know how people feel about that, but I would say if there's a chance that, any chance that I might be in that crew that's gonna be laid off, I'd wanna know, and I'd wanna know right away so that I could see my options. The other thing about this plan, so one year you say, okay, we're gonna be cutting to reach this, and then the next year we're gonna cutting to reach this. I'm just trying to think what that vibe's gonna do to our community. If I was a teacher, I sure as heck wouldn't come here and take a job, because I'm thinking, well, they're gonna be cutting next year again. And, and if I'm a parent, I'd be saying, oh, they're gonna be doing another round of cuts next year. Wonder what that's gonna look like. To me, we need to right the ship now the best way we can, and then move forward. It's hard. It's hard to make this decision, but this lollygagging kind of thing of, well, I don't really wanna do it. It's gonna be hard. Yes, it's hard, but I'm not sure we're any better off stretching this out and making teachers wonder what's going on and the community wonder what's going on. I, I think we need to take care of business. And working with staff, I truly believe our staff working with the superintendent will do everything they can. I hear that George has the Blue Ribbon Committee with their suggestions, and I believe that Ms. Parks will listen to those things and will take everything into account. And I think questioning her intention is just really wrong, because I know better.
Trustee, trustee Carehale, did you have something before I moved to?
I'll defer to that.
Okay. So trustee Muhammad and trustee Gano and Dupree. I didn't see your hand.
So one of the, because I can see, looking at the two different plans, so the one that's 25 million all at once and then dividing it, I know that there's some assumptions that were, were being made, especially like, you know, the, the number of students that we're gonna lose annually. And, and I, me, me looking at the 25 million all at once gives me some, some anxiety as well, because you don't know what's gonna happen when you do it all at once, if it is gonna impact student enrollment, if it's gonna impact, you know, teachers staying with us. Like, that seems like a bigger shock to the system, you know, compared to like a two-year, even though we're not, it's not getting us to the goals, but at least it gives us time. But I can see the others, I mean, I can see both scenarios, the pros and cons of them, but I feel like the two-year, at least, it would give, give some time. So.
Trustee Gano?
I, I am honestly uncomfortable with our fund balance dipping to 1.59% next year. However, looking at Slide 8, 15 million gets it up a little bit to 2.38. 20 million unpaid, unten gets it up to 3.97, almost 4%, which is quite a bit higher. I, I would like to entertain the possibility of authorize, authorizing, for the sake of the report to the state, that, and I don't know how to word this, because I'm just thinking, that we will make reductions in the neighborhood of, I don't know, 15 to 18, 15 to 20. I don't know how the wording goes, so that we can satisfy our obligation to the state while we continue to work out details of a plan that will come back to the board for later approval, with that being open-ended. I mean, this, this wouldn't be our final decision, but it would, it would reassure the state and reassure the community that we're refining our plan, we're doing it with some financial stewardship in mind while taking care of the needs of the district.
Trustee Dupree?
Make a comment on, I'm not trying to be nitpicky, but on the idea of kinda dragging things out, lollygagging, not willing to make difficult decisions. I think the fact that each one of us decided to run, considering how much time it takes, how much sacrifice you have to make to family, things like that, those are difficult decisions to make, so we're able to make difficult decisions. I think what we're doing now, when we're looking at the two-year option, is seeing, seeing if we can take some time to, one, consider some of the things that have been brought before us today. I think that, you know, I've been one of the people constantly advocating for before care and after care from day one. Okay? So if we had an opportunity to restore that, and that would increase our student enrollment, because more people would find us to be a desirable district to be in, because we are not only concerned about just children, but the whole family and what we need, then that makes sense. That's something you can consider over two years, right? So there's a lot of things you can do within those two years that could possibly get us in a better situation than we are now. So it's not dragging it out. No, it's not the best decision to have to talk about making, but in reality, we wanna figure out the best way to do this, so that we are considering our staff, we're considering our students, and considering the families that are gonna be affected by this.
Trustee Bess, go ahead.
So let me respond to the childcare issue. Trustees, as you know, we have been prepared. We have been ready for our before and after. We haven't had the bodies show up to do this work. Now, we're talking about potentially cutting our staff, but then in order to do before and after care, we're going to have to pay somebody to do that. So that, that's, that's a little awkward, to say the least. My question to Mr. Dimitrios, please, is, you've been through this. You've been through the worst, this experience of, of, again, districts with emergency managers. There was a question regarding timeline today. Could you talk, please, first of all, if the state does not accept our plan, our corrective actions, what happens? And I'll have to say, I, I have worked on state reports and answering questions from the state and the Treasury. If you don't get it right, they will let you know, and that's not necessarily a good thing to not get it right. You have to do it on time, as they ask, because I'm sure you probably went for an extension. We're looking at April 15. I cannot see anyone with any sense of business, of financial management, thinking that we, if your budget is 90% in one area, to come up with even 8% not touching that one area. We have identified seven so far, and I think that's great, but we still are looking at right now proposed 18. But my question, again, back to you, Mr. Dimitrios, could you talk about the timeline? If we, I'm assuming we will meet the April 15 deadline. What happens after that? How soon do we hear from the state that, okay, we believe you, we hope this'll work? What, what happens next, please? Then also too, I'm sorry, I know I'm throwing a lot at you, what happens if the state doesn't like our answer?
So once we submit the plan, there is a committee, which is the state budget director, the state treasurer, and I can't remember the other person's job in, in the state, the person who's in charge of licensing and so forth. So a group of those three people, we review a plan, and then I think they have 10 days to review it, and then I think it's all spelled in the law. And then they have like 30 days to get, to get back to us. So, and then they'll make a determination based on the plan if there is a financial distress or not. So if they determine there is a financial distress, then we talked about those three or four different options, which is the consent agreement, the, I think one of them is the ISD taking over, doing a review of our finances and so forth. Another one is an emergency manager, and, and the other one is basically Chapter, Chapter 9.
Bankruptcy. Bankruptcy.
Yes. So if they determine there's no financial distress, then we have, based on the plan, then we, they will determine if, how good is our plan, then they might meet with us once a month, or they send somebody from Treasury, or we go to Treasury every month. We submit our cash flows, we submit our financial reporting, we go through them until they feel comfortable that we are, okay.
I'm sorry if I may interrupt. So.
So there are different options that they, they can implement.
So, so again, the good, if, if we're deemed not in financial distress, we're still under constant monitoring, monitoring.
Until they feel comfortable with us, then.
Correct.
Yeah, over here, then they're not gonna be comfortable.
I'm sorry, say again?
If we're in this scenario.
Yeah, this is not looking good.
No.
So 30 days before they give us feedback, so now we're into May, maybe end of May.
Yeah.
So then, school ends mid-June. So at that point, we would be forced to do, again, if we're under financial distress, the, like you said, we could be under a consent agreement, and I cannot see where staff layoffs would not be part of the consent agreement. And we're talking about notification, if we postpone this, notification June, June 1.
I mean, even, even the ones that were mentioned here in, I'm just gonna go to the, even in, in this 7 million, there are layoffs there.
Correct.
They're not. So this district cannot be financially viable without layoffs. That's just the matter, that's just the fact.
So 30 days to give us feedback to determine whether we are in financial, as they define, financial distress or not. How soon could, I mean, in terms of, and I know this probably varies on the situation, there is no clear-cut calendar of number of days before you get to consent agreement, WISD takeover, or emergency manager?
I think there is. I just don't know it by heart.
Okay.
But once we submit a plan, they're gonna put a plan in a, they have like a financial, financial model that they use. Like, we got the letter because they put our numbers in the financial model, and it showed that in two years, not, not next year, but the year after, based on last year's numbers, 2023, that in 20, I believe in '25, '26, we will be in deficit. That's what the financial model shows. In actuality, we'll be in deficit next year if we don't do anything. Because they don't have the '23, '24 numbers, their model was a year off. But once they get the '23, '24 numbers, they will be more alarmed than they were with the '22, '23 numbers, because the model is gonna show them that next, the following year, we're gonna be in deficit. I think you have plenty of information here to make a decision. And I urge you to make the decision and then give the school district, the administration, the flexibility to start building plans, reforming the state. We're gonna be responsible, we're gonna do what we need to do to put the school district back to financial viability, and that's, that's all I can say. With, with everything we've shown you, it's, we don't have a lot of choices at this point, and we've shown you a, a way that has to be done. And we looked at, we didn't just look at these scenarios, we looked at a variety of scenarios to, to come up with a recommendation. It wasn't like.
So just to clarify, like you said, even if we walked away today feeling confident with the 7 million, we still need approval in order to issue layoffs to these current staff members?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Trustee Schmidt?
How is this situation affecting our borrowing power as a district and our bond rating?
Okay. It's a couple of different questions. Our borrowing power. So tonight, you will have a resolution in front of you to allow the school district to borrow up to 35 million, depending on the decisions that you make with cutting 25 or less or whatever. If we don't cut anything, we need to borrow the full 35. That's why we have that up to 35. If, if we, let's say, we, we do the whole 25 all at once, like it's recommended, then we'll probably be borrowing around 10. Because even if we cut to 25, the savings will not be realized right away. They will be realized over the, the course of the year. So, and then after that, we won't have to borrow. The reason why we're bringing it tonight is because for the first pay in June, we don't have enough money to pay our employees. So we wanna, usually districts borrow money in August. We're gonna borrow in June, first week in June. I, I think we, there is a lot of things that are happening to the school district financially that we need to take care of. I cannot be any more blunt.
Any more questions? Trustee Carehale?
I just have a comment. Really, you know, I understand all the logistics that's happening. We've talked about the plans and the timelines. I guess, for me, the, the thing I, I'm most interested in is our, our communication with our employee groups and our communication with the public. And I, I don't feel comfortable giving approval for layoffs. And the reason why I don't feel comfortable with that is I wanna hear it from our union leadership and our community that they understand the criteria around those layoffs and the circumstances under which they might be let go. I know that's a lot of moving parts based on the contract, like seniority being the, one of the most obvious. I think most people know that teacher evaluation be, being pretty obvious, I think. But again, I, I'd wanna see what those layoffs mean relative to other options we might have. Now, I know this isn't reflected, wouldn't be reflected in the slides that we're looking at, but if we're talking about perhaps a 12, whether it's 18 million to that total, for example, what if we were to sell off some of our buildings and our property? I, I would love to know how that would affect, you know, I know that's not a reduction in our expenses necessarily, so our expenses will still compound over the five years, but I would still wanna know what kind of percentage we would have at the end of the year. Because $18 million, to me, or I guess if we're looking at the half, half-year scenario, that would be an additional $5 million, that doesn't seem like a whole lot to make up in other spaces, given, I don't say out easily, but we were able to find the 7 million in other spaces that didn't include student-facing personnel. So to me, when we, we had the initial discussion that all options are on the table, those options are on the table for me, I just don't know what the consequences would be and what the benefits would be. And until I could know those, I just don't feel like I have a, a complete picture of, of what I'm weighing. So, so, and, and also, I know in these projections, it says that, you know, teachers would be making a 1.5 increase every year over those five years, and that's an assuming every year, but I kinda know how unions work. And if it means that, that would protect some of the livelihood of their fellow employees, it wouldn't necessarily have to be 1.5% if they meant that their colleagues could keep their jobs and more, me, teacher, more teachers generally, no, I'm just, if you could wait a minute, you know, I am a teacher, so I am in the union, so I do understand that. And I believe I'm the only working person up here who's in a union. So I can't speak, I can't.
Trustee Carehale?
I think I could speak about that. Well, then don't allow him to interrupt me.
Fair.
Thank you.
I apologize. I was out of order.
Appreciate that. The point being that when our union, or a union stands in solidarity, there are other considerations that they might have within their own group that they might not want us to hear. that they might not want us to hear. And that's why, when we're telling folks of criteria, it ought to be happened amongst leadership so that our, our union leadership can communicate to their members those circumstances and not be communicated by us or by anybody else. And so that's, I think, a little bit of a starting to build the trust. But again, if, if we're saying that all options are on the table, and we've had emails about our Latin programs, our music programs, environmental education programs, I just don't see why, why that, the idea of selling some of our non-purchased property wouldn't be on the table as well.
My question to that, go ahead, Trustee Depr.
We discussed that at the last meeting. I can't remember what his answer was. Because that was one of the things that I brought up in the list of questions. What about our real property? And I believe there was an answer to that.
It was one time he said.
There, it, it's a little bit more complicated, but I, I'll try to explain as, as much as I can. So let's take, an easy building will be balance, right? Okay. So balance is at least 50 years old and so forth. So that's fully depreciated. And any money we borrowed to pay for balance is already any bonds, or it's already been paid. So any recent, I know we put a new roof in there, or that money was paid with sinking fund, the new roof. If I remember correctly, it was half a million or something like that. Other renovations that took place. So depending on when they happen and where the source of that money came from, then it will be depreciated down, let's say. And then, if there's, if it's in the sinking fund, then that money, the undepreciated part, will go to the sinking fund. The remaining balance will go to the general fund. A school like, let's just say, Skyline, just for example, for demonstration purposes, which is a newer school, so schools are supposed to last, they depreciate over 40 years. So that school, I think, was built in 2009, so it's like 15 years old. So it still has 25 years of life left in it. And that was paid with bond money. And so, and depending on, on the bonds that, which I'm sure they're still outstanding, because I believe they were like 30-year bonds. So there will be a calculation of how much it will go to the bonds, and then how much it will go to the general fund. And it's not as simple as you sell a building and it goes. Or if we have land, land is not depreciable. So depending on what the source, if it was bought with general fund, then it goes to the general fund. If it was bought with bond money or sinking fund money, that's where it goes. It's not, so there is the complexity of how the money goes. And then the, the second part is, that money is a one-time money, and, and it doesn't, it might help you for one year, but then the next year, you're, you've got to deal with it.
You know, I totally, I totally understand all of that.
Okay.
What I'm asking for is the actual number and the calculation. I mean, I guess that, that's, that's, I mean, all of it otherwise is supposition about this money would go there, and this money would go there. I'm more interested in what portion of that money is going to make up either the 5 or the $18 million so that when we make the decisions about layoffs or programming or Chromebooks, we have actually numbers next to these things, rather than just, it could be that, it could be this. I mean, I'm, I hope you understand.
It's okay, it's okay.
I know it's complex. I'm not saying it's a simple number. I know that.
I'll address the technology issue as well.
Sure.
All the technology we buy is from the bond issues. So none of that money, if you sell all the Chromebooks, Apple's, HP's, Dell's, whatever we have, will go to the general fund. It will go back to the bondish.
And the only caveat is half of the technology purchases were grants. So half, we got grants for technology. And the other hand is the technology bond. So no general fund dollars for Chromebooks, laptops, iPads, any of that.
Trustee Kehro, did I hear you say that you're not comfortable passing any layoffs without more detail? Is, is that what I understood?
Yes, you understood that.
Okay, so what, do you have an idea for what would be in the corrective act, action plan to the state if we don't approve any layoffs? How would we remedy that?
What I would like is more information in advance of this, because we haven't met in I can't know how many weeks. And I haven't heard anything from anyone at this table, trustee-wise, about what our potential plan might be. So that's why you might find me a little bit jarred about why, I, I understand that, that it's going to be part of the plan, but I haven't heard any creativity as to, could we turn in something that's pending? Could we turn it and get additional stuff? I mean, it sounds like that's not possible. So I understand the situation that we're in. It's okay for me not to feel comfortable about it.
I understand, I guess, I'm just trying to understand. So do you have an alternative solution is what I'm asking you?
I think I just pitched that I would like more information.
That's not an alternative by April 15th. Do you have, we have to submit this report by April 15th. Do you have an alternative that we can?
I don't have an alternative. I'm expressing to you that I'm uncomfortable with the decision because of the authority that it gives without having the information that I have.
Okay, all right, thank you. Trustee Gainer.
On, on that very point, I did bring up, and I would propose that we pass a motion authoring, authorizing what's needed for up to, I don't know, 15, 18 million dollars' worth of cuts to satisfy the needs of the state. I'm expect to have further cuts, difficult cuts. His responsibility is to approve those. I, I don't want to stand in the way of what's necessary for the superintendent to do her job, for us to do our job. But I'm, I'm very wary of giving a blank check at this point. But I, I am willing to make that compromise, if you will, to take the step of good faith, saying, yes, we are, we do need to make difficult decisions. We are, we will be prepared to do it. This came up quickly as a crisis, and we need to go through our process of public engagement and best thinking. And we do have the time, given the contractual deadlines, to do that.
Trustee Baskett and Trustee Muhammad.
I don't even know where to begin with that. But I just want to confirm, even at 18 million, 12 million, we're still talking about layoffs, are we not? I mean, where are we going to find those numbers? I, I just don't get it.
Sorry, even in the 7 million, there's layoffs.
Right, there's still layoffs. But I just want to clarify, whether you're saying 7, 12, 15, 18, whatever, you're still, we still need to approve layoffs. And one of the things, trustee, and I'm just going to address this, and we can just drop it on the table and walk away. I, I find it offensive when you use the word "blank check." I find it offensive when you say, "We trust the superintendent." But maybe we don't trust the superintendent. But the blank check, I just find that totally offensive. We voted for her to do her, to, for her to be in this position. I'm assuming the contract's coming soon. She's been doing the work. We said we had faith in her. Then let's show faith. That blank check thing assumes that she's going to operate without our support, without our approvals, and I just find that offensive. And, and again, Ms. Parks, I apologize to you because that just does not sound right from a support, supposedly a supportive board. You have, you have done the work, and you will continue to do the work. And either we support you or we don't. Let's just be, but don't say that, you know, we don't want to give a blank check. You have been very transparent in terms of, this is your recommendation. And I know you and I have talked about various options. And as I've said to you, I will stand by your recommendation. It's not an easy decision. You came up through the ranks. And as you've said, these have been tearful conversations with some folks in the district, and, and I do believe you in that. This is not easy for anybody. And it's definitely not easy for each of us board members. But again, your recommendation is, it seems like the 25. And so I will support you at that. But that does require, we need to make decisions. There is no more time, folks. We're not going to meet again before the 15th. So we need to make a decision tonight. So let's just figure out what we're going to do. And by the way, the fact that we're still in this quandary here, that doesn't look good to the state either. Believe me, the state and everybody else is looking at us. So to put in a...
Quiet, please, quiet, please.
To put in a plan that's less than honest with everybody is just not going to be in a good spot for us.
Thank you. Trustee Muhammad.
So one suggestion, I don't know if we can for the resolution, because it seems like, you know, there is some discomfort, especially with, like, approving a resolution as it is. What about including something like pending board approval of plan or something in the resolution where, you know, a plan comes back to us, you know, at each time, and we can approve it for all the layoffs that are, if there are layoffs? So I don't know, that's just one. I know you said, is there an alternative? But just including some, some statement about pending board approval of plan or something.
My assumption, and Mr. Demetrius can correct me if I'm wrong, my, my assumption is, if we say we're giving, that if worst-case scenario, we're going to cut 25 million, but we have to come back to approve that later, so we're not really giving the, the, saying we're cutting 25 million, that's not really a corrective action plan because we haven't authorized that possibility. We've just punted it down the road. So I don't think they'll see that as a, and correct me if that's not, not true.
I don't think pending board approval is going to make it. I think we need to make the decisions and...
Thank you. Thank you. Any other comment before we move down the agenda?
Could you put the slide up that shows the 12 million again? Because you made the comment that, that the state will look at us and decide if we're in duress, or, I don't know the word you used. Financial distress, thank you. We're in duress, too. But that, that, it appears to me that if we do that, we're going, go to the 12, the 212, sorry. To me, that's pretty, that's pretty clear that we're going to be. I mean, they're going to look at next year and say 1.5? I mean, that to me is, the train's going to leave the station if we do this. And if, if we vote on this, we all have to look at ourselves. Because when this goes down, this is bad. This is going to be very bad for our district if this happens. I mean, we can't take this lightly to say, oh, yeah, no, we'll go ahead and just do it over two and let it drop next year to 1.58. The state's, that, that's not going to, that's, that's not going to fly.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Demetrius. Oh, any more comments before we move down the agenda?
So if we did, if we did the 12.5 and it dropped down to 1.58, and then one of the things that's been looming is the possibility of somebody just coming in and taking over the district. Would that happen at that point or no?
I don't think it would, it would happen at that point because we still have 1.1.5.
Right.
But you still need to cut another 12 and a half the next year.
Right.
And you are going to put the school district in, for a year, in, how can I say, I don't want to say chaos, but it's, it's, it's...
Let me ask a follow-up to that question. If we did the 12.5 and we went down to 1.59, if there was any fluctuation anywhere else, that's a pretty thin margin.
Very, very, yeah.
And if, I think I mentioned that earlier. And if we actually went down, you know, to zero or negative, then, then the state would, then what?
What?
I mean, then what possibility exists?
Any, any possibility exists.
Before, before you mentioned.
Yes.
Okay, so if we, if that 1.59, which is so thin, and we mess it up just a little bit and go negative?
And I already showed you today where that, this year, we might end up lower than...
Than anticipated.
Yes, because all our expenses are trending much higher.
And if we miss it by that 1.59%, then we have the possibility of ISD taking over, state takeover, bankruptcy, or consent agenda, consent agenda?
Yes.
Okay.
And when that happens, contracts can be thrown out the window. Boards don't operate, we have no oversight. Superintendent doesn't make the decisions. It's, it's, laugh if you like, but you, Mr. Demetrius, have been in districts where you've seen it happen, and it's, it's terrible. Nobody that's making the decisions knows the history of the district, knows the quality that the district aspires to. It's, I mean, I hate to say bean counters, but...
Pure, pure numbers.
It's, it's pure numbers.
All right.
If I may.
Trustee Baskett?
Let's clarify, the emergency manager route.
Yes.
He or she, they, may not be a bean counter, okay? I mean, I, I worked for a, a wonderful gentleman who had, was not in finance, okay? And he was assigned, right, to be emergency manager of Detroit, okay? Well-meaning guy, but he did not know education as an occupation, and finance was not. I mean, look at the requirements for an emergency manager. You don't have to be, even have a business class.
No.
So it's really scary at that point, just to emphasize what you were saying, Trustee Schmidt. You know, you don't know who will be coming to the table to make your decisions.
All right, anything else? We can move down to the consent agenda. All right, thank you, Mr. Demetrius.
Thank you very much.